States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It appears that we have the chief here, but I believe he's here for something on the agenda, so I don't see anyone here for public comment. So we'll move immediately to the approval of the meeting minutes of April, I'm sorry, of May 2nd, 2022, and look for a motion to approve the May 2nd, 2022 minutes as presented.
I was gonna move to amend them.
Okay.
Just in new business, section C, further discussion, just to remove the word "not" from the first sentence. Under new business, section C, I just moved forward down here. Under new business, there was a section C under further discussion?
What page are you? Oh, I got it.
The word "not" in the first sentence.
Any?
It's at the top of page five.
Further discussion? So the next picture?
Oh, it's on top of. Okay, I thought you said, no, I don't know. Okay. Okay. Okay, we're good?
What's wrong with it?
It's just a double negative. It's just a typographical, but it changes the meaning.
You say he's not comfortable moving forward with the use of the ARPA?
It's the second "not."
Without "not" for a meeting.
Okay, we have the, um, the change. Motion by Mr. Dixon to omit the second reference to "not" on page five. Paragraph one?
Yeah.
Okay. So move approval of the meeting minutes with the change recommended by Mr. Dixon, which is to remove the second reference to "not" on the top of page five of the minutes.
Second the motion.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It looks like a approval of those minutes. Executive session minutes from May 2nd, 2022. Look for a motion to approve as presented.
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are not for release?
Correct.
Okay, moving along. Town administrator report.
Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight, um, under community events, I'd like to, at every meeting, if we have something coming up or something that's recently passed, identify like what's going on in the community. Um, so it's great that the weather is getting nicer out, a little bit, um, hot for some people's taste, but here we are. Everything is kind of popping up in the community, um, as far as community events go. So Nornay Park has a series of events and concerts almost every weekend from now until August. Most recently, they ha- held a family fun day, and I think this past weekend, they had a concert there. Um, so if you would like to check out that list of events, we do have it on the town website, and it is posted in various places, um, throughout the community. So check those out. Uh, there is-
Have those been approved by the board, the use of the, for the concerts and use the, I don't recall approving use for a fun day now in the field?
Felt and Field, yes.
Not Felton Field.
No, this was at Nornay Park.
Marion handles that itself, Mary.
Yeah, I don't think anything has ever come to the select board for Nornay Park.
Still use of town property, just as we have them, when they do the bandstand, they just go through the motion for the bandstand. We ask everyone else to do it.
Right.
And they should be doing it down there. We're having a, I mean-
I've, I've never seen one, even in past years.
They should for some, they're just, they're, and we've had this discussion before about the events at Felton Field. Um, Felton Field has, you know, many events, horse shows all the time, and they're, it's, it's a private hor- horse club. It's not for everyone. It's for the horse club people. And they never have to pull a special permit, but they can have a hundred people there. They impact traffic, they, there's safety issues. We've had deaths at that from, from riders. We've, we've had a lot of issues down there. And they're never asked to have a special permit pulled. Doesn't mean they have to pay a fee for it because they're in control of the field, but-
Well, I don't think either the Nornay Parks folks or this Felton Field folks understand they need to do that. I'm, I'm sure they're obedient minimal.
And I, I think they should. They need to just work with us and pull the permit so it's done properly. And that way, we have the police get a chance to input and the fire, just have a chance of input, because when they have some of these horse riding shows, you could have, you know, fifty, sixty trailers down there, people that camp out there overnight in the field. Um, you know, we have had some-
Well, I, I-
Bad instances years ago where people have had some bad injuries. It's very rare, but it, it's nice and ready for me where it's going on and, um-
I don't think that's gonna be a problem for the Nornay group and/or the Felton Field Commission.
Yeah.
It's just a change in what has been past practice for them.
Right.
Right. And the town, the town has approved the special permitting process for these events, the special event permit. The town has approved it at a town meeting and, and, you know, we always do it up, we, I remember Sandy comes in for Christmas and stuff in Barry, we, we always approve it, and we just waive the fees for the town entity, and they do the same thing there. Um, but you know, even the only minister of assistant in our office comes through and puts the application through to do events uptown. And I just think we, uh, should make sure they do it.
I don't think, I just know-
Fair enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I didn't trap, continue please, but I like to hit things when they come up, because I'll forget later.
Yeah, no, please do.
No, I write notes, but I can't read my writing.
So the farmer's market is also on every Saturday on the Common in the center of town. And the 250th committee will be hosting a boot drive, um, this upcoming Saturday on May 21st in the center of town. And the Circle of Song Concert will also be on the Common on that day. There is a sign posted up, um, on the Common advertising that.
All of those, I recall special permits for, so I know they, see, that's something the difference is, they've all done it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, moving on to my office, last fall, the town received a grant to complete an ADA plan. This ADA plan is super important because it allows us to apply for grants to actually fix some of the ADA violations that we have, and it also identifies what violations that we, we do have. Um, the sec-
Numerous.
Yes, many, many, many that we know of and that we can easily identify, but then there's also some that we just typically wouldn't think of. Um, but we do have, we are working with a, a team and CMR PC, and they do have somebody who, um, has some physical disabilities going around and checking out these, these sites. So the site visits were paused over the winter, um, so they're gonna get back up to speed on those site visits and go to all of our kind of outdoor spaces with the Felton Field being this Wednesday.
On, on that topic, where did we ever get with the elevator door downstairs? Because I often see a prop open and stuff.
Yeah. So that elevator door has been a nightmare for us. Essentially, what happened is that a couple of years ago, right before I started here, the board approved a sum of money to have Worcester Door complete the project, and despite many attempts of reaching out to Worcester Door, they've never gotten back to us. So we've had to pivot, and we are working with an, another, um, local contractor to get a quote on fixing it again.
I would suspect when ADA comes out to before compliance, what they're gonna say is that door doesn't need to function, but it's gonna need a button to operate it. So before we go too far in repair, we ought to think to that way, let the company know we're gonna need to have, and they have these things, they're battery operated, now they're remote, they're pretty simple.
Right.
The door's open and they charge it. If someone pulls it open, it helps charge you and keep it going. The batteries will last a year or two.
Yeah, that would be great, because that door is like very heavy, too.
Right. And it's one of the things they're gonna look for for compliance, is we're gonna need an automatic on that door, because I think that's our only one, but I didn't want of the stuff with Grodd. That was amazing, the level they go into when-
Yeah, I know. It's not gonna be fun.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not that hard, but even handle heights installs, doorwards installs,
Grab bars.
Heights, heights of toilets.
Signs.
You're gonna have to change house and toilets.
Signs. Oh, I know.
Yeah.
You know, signage is very important, the type of signage, where it's placed.
Braille and whole thing.
Right.
Right.
They need, they need the right height and the right-
Well, it's one thing, once we get this survey done, we will be eligible to apply for grants to remediate our problems, which is a good thing.
Which is how they did it in Grodd as well.
Yeah.
Yep, and we can't apply for those grants until we have this ADA plan completed, so we're headed in the right direction.
Just be ready for a big list.
Yeah, oh, I'm, yeah, very ready.
I think I got a list of them to work on, about four pages long.
Okay, certain.
That's amazing.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that attorney Jim Baird will be retiring at the end of June after fifty years of service to the town, and there is going to be a small retirement party for him on June 13th, and, um, everybody has an invitation in front of them tonight. Under the finance departments, we have advertised our treasurer collector job a couple of weeks ago, and so far, we've received one application, and I've also had, um, some phone calls with people who are potentially interested in applying for the job. It is, it's a tough market out there right now, um, but the one applicant we do have, you know, has relevant qualifications, so I think we'll, you know, be in a good place within the next couple of weeks to do interviews.
Good.
Uh, for the library, the library trustees, they have made a decision and offer to their next library director, um, and they are currently working on a salary recommendation to the select board, and the appointment will come at our next meeting. Along with the salary recommendation. The police department last week hosted a spaghetti dinner for our seniors at the senior center, and they did this in partnership with the New Braintree Police Department. Chief, I don't know if you attended that. I was not able to, but, um, based off of some pictures I saw, it looks like it was very well attended.
Didn't, so New Braintree comes to our senior center as well?
Well, it's, the Hardwick, New Braintree, yeah, I should've said Hardwick, but-
That's okay.
Um, yeah, since they are like one combined police department, they-
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
And under, through the veterans office, I wanted to let everybody know that the Legion Post Two has released their schedule of events for Memorial Day and has invited the select board to be in the parade on May 30th. That should be May 30th, not 31st. Um, I, for some reason, I always think it's last day of the month, but it's not this year. And I believe, I believe this, Maureen, you said they, you guys are gonna have the parade at noon?
I, well, from what I understand, it's, it's at noon, yes.
Yeah, they, schedule of events that I was given wasn't too clear on, like, when everybody was supposed to line up for the parade, so.
Well, I can get more specifics from the Legion commander and so forth.
Yeah, I can talk to Tony as well about that. I was looking at it today.
I'm pretty sure it's, it's, it's noon time, from what I have been-
Yeah, but they have events that go on all day.
Yeah.
In different sections of town.
Basically all the cemeteries. We, we start down in South Berry for, for a full parade.
Well, they don't, they're not gonna do any of that this year if they under, they let me, that, that they told me, that this just going to, yeah.
Wow.
Primarily because of the, um, age of some of the legionnaires, it's, it's become very difficult for them, so. Anyway, so that's what they told me, but maybe it, it's gonna be a change.
They usually have a pretty good turnout in South Berry, and that's an earlier parade, and then when we do the cemeteries, um, there's not a lot of folks there, but it's, it's, you know, I'm sure the fire department will probably still go around the other cemeteries, but-
Yeah, they, so the pamphlet that I have seen circulated has events starting as early as 9/15, but I just, it wasn't very clear on where the parade fell into all of this, unless the parade is going to each one of these locations.
I would just, I would just say, if you could check with, with the veterans agent and make sure that the board understands its responsibilities for that day.
Yes, I will.
And maybe they're doing, it might be wise if they do, like, they might do the South Berry parade, but the veterans stay up at the monument and wait for the parade to come to them.
Yeah.
And then the other ones are all, it's, it's march up to the cemeteries, but once again, they could, they could ride up and-
And we're still working, trying to establish the band, because, um, the community band just got a new leader, from what I understand, and so I know that, um, Tony has been working with that as has the, because the high school band is somewhere else, and so isn't the Rotsey crowd. They're marching in another town this, this year. I think it's Hubbardston. So I think it's the community band for us, if they can get themselves together for that, I guess, because they've been without a leader for a while.
Okay. Chief?
So according to Tony, when I talk to him as far as traffic and everything, they're just gonna have, they're gonna hold, um, small ceremonies at each place that they used to have, like down south, um, where they used to have a parade. They're not doing a parade, just a small ceremony off, off of the roadway. Um, so I was just told that the only actual parade is gonna be uptown.
That's, yeah, that's what he led me to believe.
Yeah, they, we, the only good is, we did a South Berry parade, the others were, we parked off the road, walked up to the cemetery, but we s- not really a parade, we'd start in front of IGA and just, just go right up, and we didn't really, um, do parades.
As far as I know, there's not gonna be any marching or, other than also-
Just gonna gather up, okay, wow.
Okay.
That's a big change.
It's a very big change.
I know people-
Make it easier for me to do, because my ankle doesn't like the walking.
Yeah, I hear ya.
And that's all I have for you today.
Okay. Um, also, as far as just one more event, um, that on the 23rd of May, uh, if weather holds, the elementary school will be going to the Common, North Common, and putting the flags out. Um, that's, if, if the weather is poor, it'll be moved to the next day, and Ruggles Lane students are, and parents are ready for that event, so, and they understand the need for, to have good weather. I've met also with the Department of Public Works to ensure when the mowing will happen and all of that, so we're, I think, in good shape as far as, you know, making sure that the flags are where they're supposed to be and the people who need to get the flags are getting, going, gonna get the flags. I also, um, worked with Steve Brewer to get the, um, Vietnam Memorial to add, I think it's about eleven or twelve names, that were engraved in the back of, I have a picture of that, too.
They're putting a new plaque, right?
Well, no, it's actually in the rear of the- Come on, don't fight with me here. On the rear of the stone.
Oh, okay.
And it says, uh, Vietnam era, and it just adds the additional names in this room if we can, you know, find out from some of it.
Which they could, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that is now, it's like covered up, but it's gonna be made public, I think, by the Legion on that, um, day when we do the service on the 30th.
Oh, nice.
Okay, so.
Came through quickly enough.
Yeah.
It's been less than a year that we've really worked on that.
Well, it, trust me, for-
Well, I mean, to finally come to the board and say, okay, that's good, it's done.
Yeah.
I know people have been kicking around for years.
Kicking around for years. And, um, it was, it was not easy to get done, believe it or not, because it was really hard to find, um, a company that would be willing to get in here and do it this quickly. And I would say that, um, I did reach out to Senator Brewer, or, and I said, Steve, can you help us out? And of course, he knows people who know people, you know, and so we, we got a, a, a group to come up there and, and, and do that. And the Barry Charitable Foundation has paid for all of it.
Very nice.
So that's been very nice. So, that should be noted in the minutes, that the Barry Charitable Foundation has supported that, um, change in the monument. There are some, uh, the plaques on the front probably need to have some help as well. They're pulling away from the stone, so we'll probably need to do that in the next round, maybe next year. Anything else, Jessica? Nothing else in the report? Okay. Uh, select board members, reports? Anybody have a report of concern?
I would just follow up on our, on our dog issue. Um, they did find, it took a couple of days. Um, and Joe Jalbert got the money to the dog officer who picked up a collar, who brought it to the, to the young lady, and, um, dog's been silent ever since.
Great.
I mean, the, the instant overnight fix.
Wow, wow, great.
So it's, it's been a tremendous change, so.
Well, I, thankfully for Mr. Jalbert, has more than magnanimous in his efforts to help, you know, solve the problem.
A little money for peace and quiet was well welcomed for him.
Well, I know, but, you know, that's unusual. I think he's a very generous man.
I think it was very nice of him, and I hope she's received it that way. She's, obviously is using it, and, um, the dog is quiet.
Great.
I think it's, it's worked out fan, just good to see something nice come out of it without having to have any sanctions against anybody, just, I think it turned out very well, and it was nice.
Correspondence, uh, Jessica?
Nothing.
Did we have a, a letter of some sort? Maybe we didn't. I thought we had some correspondence, but perhaps we didn't.
We have tonight.
Nothing in emails.
Sounds good, okay. Okay, moving to new business, uh, and a discussion for funding of the Ruggles Lane Combi Oven, which is the reimbursement to the regional school district for the, um, Combi Oven that they purchased, um, last summer in order to, um, have that up and ready for scho- school opening. Uh, we're just looking for where we're going to access funding, and we have the invoices have been provided for us, so we know exactly the, the number that we need. And, um, so we just, we've had at least a cursory discussion about this, and now seek to have a final discussion as to where we will ask monies to be released from what account in order to pay for, um, the Combi Oven. I know, I know that I'm, this is unpopular, but I strongly urge and recommend that we take it from, um, from stabilization, and, um, that obviously would, could be taken care of in a special town meeting immediately preceding the regular town meeting. I think you've talked with the-
Yes, I've talked with Joshua about it, and, um, well, he actually, he was watching the last meeting. He reached out and he said this will be no problem for him to, to manage, um, hosting that special town meeting immediately before the annual town meeting. Um, we do have, when I was looking at some of our accounts recently, we do have a stabilization account that was made by the town several years ago before the landfill was closing, and the town's intention was to set aside a sum of money every year to offset the lost revenue, because the waste management was closing their landfill, and that money, the town never met its goal on what it wanted to add to that, um, landfill stabilization account, but it has been sitting there, and I think, you know, this would be a good time to use some of those funds, whether it's to-
How much is in there, Jessica?
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And so I think it would be a good time to use some of the funds to, you know, take care of smaller items that we can't hold off to, um, a special town meeting in the fall to take care of, and also reallocate the money into regular stabilization and/or capital improvement stabilization. Um, so we can, you know, we know where that money is. It has a new purpose, um, and so it doesn't get kind of lost again.
One of the other options, uh, considered last time was ARPA funding?
Yes, that was the, that's really the only other option we have.
I'm, I'm puzzled as to why we can't address this at annual town meeting as, because it's still within this fiscal year. I don't know why we can't have an, an item from this fiscal year at a town meeting.
Well, I, I don't-
Place it on the warrant and-
And, and, and they would be able to access the reimbursement that we owe them in Ju- in Ju- in July, if we've got it voted, uh, at a regular town meeting? Is that what you're asking?
We have regular town meeting.
Right.
We're going to approve the FY23 budget.
Right, correct.
I don't understand why at that town meeting, which is a town meeting, we can't place a warrant article to transfer funds from, from a stabilization account at that point,
Yeah.
within this fiscal year to cover this debt that came out right before a town meeting for that same fiscal. I don't understand, is, is there a rule that we can't? I mean, we're still in our fiscal year.
Because we can't access those funds until after July 1st. So what we do at annual town meeting-
We can't access what funds?
Whatever you'd vote-
Whatever we vote on at the annual town meeting becomes effective July 1st.
That's, that's for that next year's budget, yes.
Correct.
We could have a town meeting whenever we want to, to do town business. We could have a town meeting next week and say, we're gonna take money from stabilization.
Right.
Why can't we have a separate warrant item to do that, take money from the existing stabilization for this current year while we're still in the year?
Well, that-
We can't start next year's budget.
Well, I think that's, that would be considered a special town meeting, is what the, uh, what the moderator says.
Right. Procedurally, an annual town meeting is only for the next fiscal year. So any business that's taken care of at an annual town meeting becomes effective July 1st, and this purchase is an FY22 purchase, so it needs to be taken care of.
Right, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just amazed it's not a way to logically-
Well, but-
Have a separate article than, than they, than the omnibus budget for FY23 versus, um, the housekeeping article for-
Well, they, they almost do it simultaneous. The, the meeting is, is called to order by the moderator, and he will do that kind of business first, and it was considered a special town meeting, and then that is adjourned, and then you go into, it's within the same half hour.
Yeah, it's very-
I mean, it's-
Starting with the special town meeting is the procedural way to do that.
Correct.
My concern remains, if we try to pull it off from six to six-thirty, we're not gonna get necessarily enough people there. Um, you know.
It's my understanding that you can-
If we don't, we could still fund it in ARPA funds after the annual town meeting. It doesn't matter. We could still, we can fund it any time we want under the ARPA funds.
Right.
I, so it's my understanding that you can actually open a special town meeting at the same time as you open like a annual town meeting. It's just procedurally, you have to take care of the special town meeting.
Be the stuff first.
Kind of a semantics thing.
Well, I, I mean, having been at a lot of town meetings where that is done. It's done in Hardwick all the time, it's done in Hubbardston all the time. I haven't ever seen it done in Barry, but, uh, that's just a procedural thing. Um, but, so, I'm a, I'm really hoping that we can, uh, work with the moderator to get the special fund, this oven thing, which is an FY22, uh, funding thing, and get it out of stabilization, whether it be, now, the stabilization account that you're talking about, is your expectation that that is going to be moved into the stabilization fund and that will add, okay, during the, during-
During the annual town meeting.
During the annual town meeting, okay.
Yeah.
I would, I would think that money would be better placed in the capital purchase, um, stabilization account. Our stabilization's approaching a million. Um, I'm hoping we'll get pretty close to that this year, and that, that was always been my goal, to get it to a million or maybe go to a million, too. But start building these capital purchase accounts, and we do have to make purchases of equipment, because it could be done without impacting budget, and, and like, for example, when we lost our police car, if it wasn't covered by insurance, we'd need a way to come up with some money quick, and that, that would be an happening to do that.
I think that that, that might be a conversation we might wanna have with the Budget and Finance Committee as well?
Um, sure. And they, they're gonna wanna have input on where it goes, and I think they should.
Right.
But that's my recommendation and why. And we've, we've, we've been growing the stabilization, you know, they say five percent, um, you know, but trying to get towards ten percent, which would now be higher as our budget grows, but, um, it needs to continue to grow, but not that fast, you know?
Well, at, at any rate, so we're basically, we need a motion to indicate that we will be taking from stabilization the amount we owe the Quabon Regional School District for the Combi Oven purchased last August, and, um, that that will be done at a special town meeting immediately preceding the annual.
Correct.
So that would be the motion.
So, if that's the way we're gonna go, then first of all, tonight, we have to have a motion to have a special town meeting immediately, or congru- congruent with the annual town meeting. And so if that's the way we wanna go, although there are other choices, ARPA funds, and I'm, I'm fine with either one. Um, like, I do agree, I'd like to have the town get the opportunity to vote on these things, so if we throw it before a town meeting, and we don't get a quorum or fails, then we're paying it out of ARPA funds later anyways.
Well, well, the-
Because we're gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah, well, you, well, we're, we're not gonna not get a quorum at a town meeting.
I'm just saying, if, if for some reason, because we, we can always use ARPA funds, and we have time after annual town meeting to do that. Not a lot, but we can.
So you're, you're, you're right to say we have to authorize, uh, the special town meeting to be held immediately preceding the annual town meeting, and that we would have to open the warrant.
So I will make a motion that we have a special town meeting to immediately precede our town meeting and possibly run congruent with our town meeting.
On June 14th.
On June 14th.
Uh, I need a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, so it's like it's-
And I'll make a motion to open the warrant for the special town meeting on June 14th.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay.
I make a motion, we place on the warrant, an article to transfer, um-
Six thousand five hundred nine dollars and eighty cents.
For that count, see, the second part?
Yeah, there's the two invoices.
Six thousand-
Five hundred and nine dollars.
Five hundred and nine dollars.
Eighty cents.
And eighty cents from our capital purchase stabilization account to pay for this Combi Oven.
Second.
Discussion? Very none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we close the warrant for the special town meeting for June 14th.
Are, are we pretty confident that there's nothing hanging in DPW that they need any? I knew we did snow and ice before, so-
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't look, I wouldn't entertain it at this point anyways. We're too, we're too far in the game at the end of the year to, to play that at this point.
Okay.
They're not going to, you know, their budget's their budget. It should be good.
Okay.
If we had to, you know, throw money around between the buckets after May into May, we can. But that shouldn't be. He should be on track and I haven't heard anything otherwise, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the warrant?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay, it looks like the funding for the combi oven, you worked with the moderator?
Yeah.
To make certain that that's all taken care of and properly posted.
And I don't know if we want to really target six, just six-thirty and open both at the same time. Because I think when you start asking people to come in early, it's just going to make-
Oh yeah, and that's, and that's a, that's a five-minute thing.
Right. If he's, if he's comfortable doing congruent, then we'll open them both and do it, but I think we'll open one and close it and, and move on quickly.
Okay, we're down to personnel and appointments. Number, the first item under that is a promotion to lieutenant for a Sergeant Joseph Brown. We would need to vote to approve the chief's request to make that change and to promote Sergeant Joseph Brown to lieutenant.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment and we'll have discussion on it before a vote, I assume.
Yes.
One second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the appointment of Sergeant Joseph Brown to the position of lieutenant. Further discussion?
Couple of things. It says here effective June first and we said we'd make that position funded for July first, not June first. So that's, that part would be a no. And we haven't figured out, we haven't discussed what the salary range is going to be and figured that out with finance yet.
Right.
So I'm in favor of, of the appointment, but not, not for June first. It's going to have to be for the new fiscal year we talked about. This is supposed to be a new fiscal year position. I assume finance is going well with us. We're on track to, to fund that position.
Well, we don't, the select board negotiates a salary for that.
Right, but have a-
But they're amenable to the change.
Do we have the room in, in finance? Because I know, because we're eliminating the deputy chief position and putting in this position, then with a slight bump in one, that should be able to give a bump in that and keep us pretty close to the funding.
Yep.
But that needs to be approved and we need to have a salary discussion, which we can do publicly if he wants to join. That's up to you, but.
No, I, I had asked the same question that you were just discussing with the chief when he came in. He, there, he's aware that it's a July first, you know, actual starting the job, but as far as making the appointment or saying that effective July first, he will be actively pursuing, pursuing the lieutenant's job and actually getting paid for it. But he will not be received any remuneration before that time.
Correct. So he was going to get the title on June first, but obviously he has to negotiate his contract with you.
Right.
So there would be no pay increase or anything until after July first.
Well, are we going to make that a contract position? We're going to make that a union position. He's still part of the union. I mean, is there preference to have? Because if we contract him, we're pulling him out of the union.
I understand.
And if we don't, we can, we can assign the salary and step to that position, which I would think would be more fitting.
Well, it allows him to steal access overtime.
So the intention to, to, the intention is to pull him out of the union because his position is responsible for discipline and internal affairs. So it's much better if who's in charge of investigating any misconduct doesn't have conflict with the union. And then also there's the overtime issue as well.
Well, he wouldn't, he would not be eligible for overtime-
He is. He's not a department. He's, he's, everyone except the chief is eligible for overtime. That means fire chief, police chief, DPW superintendent, they're the three that can-
It depends on the, on the MOU that you guys agree to.
We've been, we've been informed by Labor Council before.
If, if he's responsible for assigning overtime, well, we can talk about that as part of the contract, but just, we have to make certain that there's a rotation and he, he doesn't give himself a bunch of overtime.
Well, it can be stipulated in his contract that he can have overtime as part of his contractual agreement.
Well, I don't necessarily want to do that, but I'm just saying, I want it to be clear.
I, I don't want to do that.
Because we're going to get a row from the, from the rank and file.
It, it's tough because we talk about, you obviously lieutenant position, you want it to pay higher than the sergeant position, but the reality is that any officer that wants to come in and work and take overtime can make significant money-
Absolutely.
No matter what their pay rate is.
Absolutely.
And if we preclude them from making extra money, it takes away the, you know, the bonus of being lieutenant if you're going to earn less than everybody else on the union.
Listen, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
So that's why hesitant to, hesitate to say salary, but I understand the possible conflict, but if he has a union issue, you know, if he's still responsible for discipline, they still have the right to appeal it to the union, which should be a, a lower level leader for the union and that appeal still comes to the board.
Right.
So it's still, he can do what he has to do and do his job and it's still, the discipline ultimately falls outside his hands. He can take action. If they disagree with the action, he still has, any officer still has recourse.
Well, I mean, that's something that we can discuss with the attorney and so forth and make part of his MOU or his contract, but I would certainly, with the change in that he would be effective July first, that the motion to, for this appointment.
I feel more comfortable having the salary done first so we know what we're talking about. Who, who's going to, I mean, he accepts the job, he doesn't, we say, hey, surprise, it's only a part-time job for twenty-five thousand.
What we are doing is just simply authorizing the position be made available to this gentleman. We obviously have to do our part. He has to do his part and till his MOU signed, he doesn't have the position.
Right. And we did, we did authorize, we previously, when we deleted deputy chief, we did make this position effective July first. So it doesn't exist yet. So if, if you want to move him into it in July first and that's who you've already prepared for, I'm fine with that. But we've got to get together and work on that other side of it.
Well, that's what we'll do between now and July first.
Not a lot of time.
And he may or may not accept, you know, what we, maybe we'll struggle more in negotiations than we think, but maybe we won't.
Okay.
But so basically, we have a motion on the floor. It is made and seconded to authorize the Sergeant Brown having a promotion to the, the position of lieutenant.
Okay. So I, I would think that motion needs modification to say July first.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I would do, excuse me.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
And those in favor of discussing the amendment? Hearing none, those in favor of the amendment to include it, the date to be July first, not June first?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And that, and now the final, you just said the amendment, so I'd say technically do a vote for the whole.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, to approve the, the, the motion as amended, which is just changing the date to July first. Those in favor?
Aye, thank you. Just technically, I hate to leave a technicality open where someone says, well, technically you didn't come back and vote on that, so he doesn't, you know, it's just, the things that people do look to pick apart are-
The, we have two wage adjustments in there. David Moore, eighteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, increased hours to a benefited position. And Emily Walker, eighteen fifty-nine, increased hours to a benefited position. And we need a vote on each of those separately?
They can be together unless somebody has-
We have a motion to increase the hours to David Moore and Emily Walker.
I abstain from all these.
I'll make that motion to increase the hours.
And I will second that. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Do, do you mind if I just kind of go over why? I know the chief included a letter with his request here, but essentially these two employees, they have been essentially on call and they pick up shifts the way that the fire chief schedules his, you know, coverage for the station is that he kind of opens up, there's four full-time employees who get a set number of hours and then every other shift is open and available for an on-call or part-time member to take those shifts. And these employees are consistently working forty, fifty hour weeks for the town, but they don't, they don't get paid time off, sick time, anything like that. So this wouldn't be, and we wouldn't incur really any additional costs. If anything, we will save a little bit here because they will be within the constraint of working forty hours a week instead of the typical fifty to, you know, potentially even sometimes sixty hours that these employees work every week. And the chief has a couple of other EMTs who are just finishing their classes and are going to be eligible to pick up some of the extra shifts. So that's why he's made this recommendation to move, you know, these two employees who have been very dedicated to the town to at least give them some, some benefits for, for working so hard for us.
Although I don't vote on these issues, I, I feel the need to have input in this. The discussion as to having full-time firefighters over the years has been limited to filling positions required to service the ambulance. You know, certainly during the daytime, we have a, a crew down there for ambulance and, and we do have a fire inspector who's there full-time. Most of the time you have car accidents and little alarms. They are absolutely nothing. And two people in a truck can go check it out and you don't need assistance. When they set up, they tell them they can bring in, bring in as much help as they need to without us paying full-time staff. If there's any other department, I would certainly question why on earth they're allowing somebody to take full-time pay on a part-time salary. We can't legally work somebody forty hours a week, consecutive weeks, without paying them. So the, the department head in that position should be damn sure they are not violating the labor rules and they should not be giving any of them forty-plus hours without authorization from this board first. So to say that this guy's been working forty to fifty hours continuously without prior authorization, I find infuriating.
From what I understand, this has been going on for a long time?
Yeah, for, yeah, it has been going on for a while, but these employees-
The practice is illegal.
No.
Not in the, not in the case of these type of employees because they are exempt from the FLSA. So they are considered, I believe it's special municipal employee where they-
They are special municipal, but-
But they can, essentially because they are emergency service workers, if there is a need for them, you know, to work basically an unlimited amount of hours, the, the town doesn't have to necessarily-
There's a limit to that need that you can claim is a need before you're clearly avoiding the full-time benefits, which is what's being done here. If these guys have done this for a year without benefits, they've been getting screwed over for a year, wrongfully without benefits. That should not ever happen. No one should be working without benefits if they're working full-time.
Right.
And if that's a case, then that should be discussion between the board, that we'll discuss it with the chief of the chief and work out why he hasn't done this sooner and is there really a need is the other concern. Do, why do we need full-time people other than staff and the ambulance? And if that's why he's putting someone in, in what he did in, in years past is he demonstrated the amount of missed calls we had. And that we'd have a first call, the ambulance would go, then we'd get a second call. And the number of those second calls in a year, the sheer loss in revenues more than justified a full-time person in the fire station. So we gave him a full-time firefighter EMT spot or money for it, which I believe is what he put Christina Gustafson in. Needing a second one, I don't know why. I mean, if we have a medic on, we have a full-time firefighter, we have a chief and we have a, a, the inspector, we should have four people. There should be other staff to ambulance calls.
So, 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 so your concerns are we should have this investigated just thoroughly? Jessica, if you could investigate it thoroughly to see what the situation actually is and if necessary have the chief actually show up at our next meeting and discuss.
This is the sloppiest request for a full-time job that he's ever done since he's been chief. He's come in very well documented to demonstrate what the hours are, what the need, why we have the need. And if that exists, then he should do it. And frankly, he should have done it a while ago, so this guy could be getting benefits.
Well, I, I, I-
Working someone in that job without benefits is, is horrible.
Well, I, I-
Overnight shifts, they're, they're back to, I mean, what they deal with.
Just working in that facility is difficult.
And not getting a break or a time off without losing money.
Well, one thing, we, we don't know this background, so we need to find out-
I'm just going off what we read, yeah.
Yeah. We, we need to find out more information about it. Obviously, there's no one on this board and I don't believe the chief would have, had any ill intent in the way in which he was managing his employees. And until such time as I would, I would know that, I'm not going to criticize. I'm just going to say, we'd like more information on this particular matter. And we will be meeting on the twenty-third. The agenda might be quite limited because we will be pretty much just kind of working on that warrant that we need to do and so forth. So we just need more information from him.
Absolutely. I do know that when we had access to CARES Act funds, he used that money to staff two, I believe it was two additional people. So as Greg mentioned, you know, they're able to, to respond to second calls or, you know, some other type of emergency and-
Right. I think entry four was rated for, I'm not, I'm not going to get, but it was rated for a service, so they can, they can't transport.
BLS, yeah.
But they can respond and get basic service with the ambulance, so.
Yep.
In the rare event that we have three calls, maybe he wants more people, but that's, that's a tough one to fund full-time with benefits because if we're talking twenty-five an hour, it probably costs us close to seventy thousand to fund that for a year full-time with benefits.
Right.
And can you just let us know where we are Sandy on that? We had a motion, we had him seconded. Did we approve?
Yes.
No, well, yes.
Yes.
I thought we did.
And then we're having a follow-up discussion afterwards.
Yeah, right.
You were the one who, you know, said, I'm out of this, I'm out of this. And then you jump in here with all this other information.
Well, because I wasn't reading it through because it's fire department. I'm looking at it and go, what? And that's when Jessica brought it up. But you know, you can certainly rescind the motion or, you know, I just find out why. Why, why do we have a need change without, last time he did this, he brought in fantastic documents to demonstrate that the sheer number of calls and specifically how many second calls we were losing. Because if you're losing, you know, a hundred second calls-
I understand.
You know, they build it seven hundred apiece, you're missing seven hundred thousand, you know, seventy thousand in billing.
He discussed this with you, Jessica.
Collecting half is thirty-five.
And I know that, you know, he has, he has information that he can share with us. And we can rescind the motion that was made.
You don't have to either. It's up to you. I'm just, I just wanted to have that discussion first to be aware of things that had done in the past and-
Well, I wish prior to the vote, you had not-
I know. I tried not to, but sometime-
I don't want you to say anything. And then you say-
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to take a leave from the department soon until I can pay attention to things.
Well, as, so as I was saying, when we had access to the CARES Act funds, he did fund two additional people, you know, full-time at the station. And it was, acted as a really good case study for us to show that we are going to receive extra revenue because we will be able to staff those extra calls. So I don't have the most recent numbers, but our revenue that we had billed out, even with having somebody, you know, that extra staff for such a short period of time, we have, you know, far past eclipsed what we billed out for revenue previously, in previous years.
We staff the station in a way that he should be able to make the double calls always. So this shouldn't have changed that ability.
Well, it indicates here that he, this gentleman, David, has, has for over the last year, he's been filling the weekly open shifts at the station. And so it appears that he's been working this number of hours, sometimes often exceeding forty.
Right.
And your concern obviously, and is appropriate, that have we been jipping him by not providing him with a full-time, you know, set of benefits?
Which we can redress next year. You can't go back here and change that.
And we, the chief and I had talked about this before as well, about the fact that these employees were not receiving benefits and they were taking so many open shifts. And the attorney even said that we are not obligated to provide these people benefits because they are, you know, emergency service, special municipal employees. They are exempt from the FLSA. And that conversation came up too when we were negotiating the union contract, because there was a lot of discussion around the number of hours they had to work in a week and how that kind of panned out over a two-week period. So the attorney has made it very clear that they're exempt from FLSA and by these employees working over forty hours a week was by their choice because they were the ones that took the shifts.
Okay.
They were not scheduled by the chief. They are the ones that chose those shifts.
So basically, this has been vetted through our attorney?
Yes.
Okay. So I would suspect that we would like to get more information on it, but I don't think we have done anything inappropriate.
I would disagree with inappropriate, just because we have a technicality says we can get away with it.
I understand what you're saying. I understand. The, the one usually saying that.
These are open shifts that they're taking.
Correct.
These would be staffed by people either way. So it's, at this point, essentially either make them full-time, give them the benefits that they earn by the amount that they're doing, that they should get for the amount they're doing, or get more people part-time to take more of those shifts.
And that's the biggest, right. And that's the biggest challenge is getting people part-time. Because everybody has, you know, busy lives and they can't always make-
See, if they're trying to fill overnight shifts, that's one thing. Those people at home, they might fill a shift, but I don't- See, if they're trying to fill overnight shifts, that's one thing, most people at home, they might fill a shift, but I don't. Once again, I haven't followed any of this stuff, because I don't get involved in any extra duties or different duties. Since I've been a select board, I'm just a firefighter. I receive the same pay, I do the same hours when I can, and that's it. So I don't know how he's, how he's putting out these shifts, I don't know who they're offered to, or how they're offered. I don't know if he's restricting them to people that have a firefighter one-two certificate, which to drive an ambulance, you don't need either. So I I don't know if he's, he's structuring this in a way to to create the need, um, or if it is really just nobody wants to take them, you know, because who wants to go work, you know, if you work all day and somebody's making twenty-eight, thirty dollars an hour, or they wanna go sleep at the firehouse and lose sleep for, you know, firefighter pay of fifteen, seventeen an hour.
Yeah.
Um, so it may be very difficult to be filling it, but that's the things he needs to bring up, and.
Oh, I know he has, he's had conversations with you, Jessica, during the course of the last several months, and so we'll move forward with this with the expectation that we will spend some time having a a more specific conversation with him at either our next regular meeting, which will be the thirty-first.
I would have seen that, love to see that for FY twenty-three budget.
The next regular.
To change a full-time shift.
Meeting is June seventh.
Oh, it is, okay, 'cause we'll meet on, okay. So we won't go on Tuesday the thirty-first?
No, we only meet on the first and the third Mondays of the month, so if there's a fifth Monday.
Oh, okay, so we have a little extra time, okay, moving on.
It was approved, it's been left alone, there's been no motion to rescind.
It's been approved, yeah.
It was just discussion.
We probably, I think, I think it will be important to get clarification from the chief, uh, whether we do that in writing, or whether he reports to us on, in the first meeting in June, we'll have a conversation.
So it would be appropriate to rescind it until that time, I guess is the next question.
Well, I'm very comfortable with the fact that Jessica and the chief have had legal vetting of this, but if if.
Legal vetting means we don't have to pay them any overtime hours. But typically, let's say somebody like the police chief randomly came in and said, I'd like to pay a lieutenant now. We said, sorry, chief, that's on for July first, but you know what, for fire, we'll just do it at a whim's notice.
Well, I I don't think it's the same situation.
You see what I'm saying, though?
Well, no.
We're gonna make a full-time slot that doesn't exist without any discussion about it, which is just, it's never happened since I've been on the board in five years. We've never just just made a full-time spot without.
Well, okay, okay, you must have missed it when it was first discussed and when we made the motion to approve it. Because you said, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm not gonna say anything, then after it's approved, you all of a sudden have.
I admit, I wasn't paying attention to.
Paying of conscience or something.
I wasn't paying attention to what it was, I I, they're pay authorizations, so I'm just looking at the pay, I'm like, why do I have three? Then I'm reading the letter, I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't even read that ahead of time, and I should have, and that is my fault to have not spoken up. I should have read that ahead of time, but I really try to stay out of that stuff.
I can tell.
But this is just, this is just.
Okay, okay.
I think it's getting closer.
Yeah.
This is just one.
Jessica, do you.
John, what, what, how do you feel about this? Do you wanna rescind, do we wanna give the chief an opportunity to come in and have a conversation with us in more detail?
If, if we've heard from the chief that there is difficulty getting other people to take those shifts, which is my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm I'm comfortable going forward, but.
Okay. I think.
I don't see a other option around it.
And so you did one motion to approve that and the two pay raises, or you did it all together?
There's no, there's actually no pay raise, it's just the hours are, he's, he, we're basically just giving them the opportunity to have benefits.
Authorizing it a benefit of position as well.
Yeah, there, it's the same hourly.
And is the chief prepared, do we know, is he prepared for that to impact his budget with the current finances he has for the year?
So there's no current.
'Cause we can't make it go negative.
Right, and so there will be no impact to its budget because these employees are already working forty-plus hours a week. So they are just going to be eligible, you know, if they get sick, if they wanna take a vacation day, which with such short time remaining in the end of the year, I don't expect it to be too much, but.
Yeah, they accrue those by the hour, so.
Right, and, you know, both of the employees have indicated that they will not be taking the town's insurance, so there's no impact on that end. Um, so essentially, they're just gonna get paid for the hours that they are already working and that they will continue to work, but in an effort to recognize their dedication to the town and how many hours that they've already, you know, worked without any kind of benefit, um, this is an effort to kind of, one, encourage them to stay because right now, they can probably walk into any department and get better pay and good benefits, um, and just to recognize that, like, we value them as employees.
Okay, um, moving on to the use of town property. Um, it looks like we have a request for making up, from making opportunity count at the town hall. Um, Jessica, do we have all documents, I think we do?
Yes, it's just this, um, a small event for for families and children, and they're hosting it at the town hall. Usually, they do a lot of things on the common, but for this activity, they wanted to use the town hall.
And that's just at ten AM, um, will they be there a couple hours, a hundred people, they figure?
Yep.
That's a lot of people. Okay.
Yeah, I think they've, they've built a good rapport in the community.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have moved to approve the use of town hall on June tenth for making opportunity count.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, having heard the motion and a second to allow the making opportunity count individuals to the use of the town hall on June, what was that, tenth? Those in favor?
Aye.
Have to unanimous? Okay, it looks as if we are ready for another, if we have another. If not, we are, can move to old business, which is discussion of annual town meeting date. Um, I think that, um, there's really no need to discuss that further. We we had contemplated, or talked at least, um, about, should we shift the town meeting till later based upon what happened to the senate budget? And look, hoping that our meeting would be held after conference committee, and we would have specific information as to the exact amount of revenue we would be receiving. But that seems a little not worth doing, so, uh, I I don't think we have to take any action unless there's a further discussion by the gentleman.
We've gotta get our budget set within reasonable time, I mean. Well, what do we put, push it out a week and a half and be there very in the fiscal year, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta make it in good conscience.
The issue is really, it comes down to the school's budget.
To school's budget, um, the later it is for them, the more information they have, and the chance you can get the school budget done before the thirtieth of June. Otherwise, I don't think it is gonna be, well, we'll see what happens. I I know they have another school committee meeting in the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
And, um, so they will be making other adjustments in the budget. Um, there are, of course, being, uh, they have some big issues in the senate budget. If it happens, it could make a difference in their assessment, if it doesn't happen, it won't make a difference in their assessment. And so trying to decide.
The voting, assuming they fund some of these things, they've not been funding?
Well, we hope, but, you know.
Long overdue.
Yeah, well, we've got some amendments, the regional school people have amendments on the floor, well, in the, in the, in the senate, but whether or not any of it will come to fruition is difficult to say. It's, it's just that if we don't have an assessment that we can manage, um, we will leave town meeting with no school budget, which means we're gonna be doing town meetings in August and maybe again in October.
Well.
But it is, it is part of the game, we know, and we wait for the senate to maybe give us, but, you know, conference committees, sometimes they don't report out till early July, so they may not have their numbers, so it'll be interesting to see where we do with that.
On the topic of the annual town meeting, there was discussion last time about a location, about changing that to the high school. I don't know if there's been any updates on that about availability?
Um, well, I think it comes down to whether that's where, if the board wants to have it at Ruggles Lane, that's where I've been advertising at.
Oh, I thought we, we agreed we'd rather have it in the high school, it's a much better venue.
Right.
I think we were just waiting to hear if it was available, right?
We're gonna talk to the school, that's what we left you, we're gonna talk to the school and see if they were amicable to us, really, at the high school.
Yeah, I can, I can double check on that.
Yeah, because, well, we don't, we definitely don't want the gym.
Yeah, but then Ruggles is so.
Yeah, we'll go to Ruggles without the gym, 'cause the gym was bad, with acoustics, it was bad. And the, the, I know, I know that in the cafeteria, it is air-conditioned, and that's nice, um, but of course, the acoustics there aren't great either, but, um, it's, it's doable with the sound people. I thought we could hear fine last year there. But it, I I mean, the gym was awful for trying to have, and it's not air-conditioned, you'll be just as hot there as you're gonna be in Ruggles Lane, so.
I don't know, Ruggles is pretty bad.
Pretty hot, yeah. Well, and anyway, um, so, uh, there's no action to be taken on old business section A, and it looks as if, as far as the location of the town meeting, it will be at the high school if there is opening in the cafeteria.
Right.
They're, that's pretty late in their school year, so I would suspect it would be available.
Yeah, yeah, it should be fine.
I'm gonna discuss the warrant.
Next meeting, next week.
Next meeting.
Twenty-third.
And that gives us that week to amend it if we need to, and re-meet if we have to.
Yeah.
Um, before we exit open session, I just give you some numbers for fun. An eighteen fifty-nine hourly rate is about, um, twenty-seven and a half, almost twenty-eight dollars an hour for a time and a half. So at twenty hours a week for fifty weeks and a thousand hours, and it's twenty-eight thousand in overtime, puts those poor people's salaries at that for part-time. That's.
But they don't make overtime rate? No, because they.
Wow, I thought, I misunderstand state law, I thought once anybody worked forty hours in a week, you had to pay them time and a half for every hour of over forty.
Not for, not for this.
Is there a good number exempt?
Yeah, they are considered exempt, since they're, one, once they become a full-time employee, that's when they're eligible to make, um, the overtime rate. But since they are a, an exempt part-time special municipal employee, they're not eligible for any kind of benefit. Um, because really, at the end of the day, they're taking all of these open shifts kind of at their will, like the chief isn't.
That puts them back to fifty-six, about fifty-seven thousand, which still isn't horrible, but I mean, um, no benefits, no vacation.
Right, and the fire chief isn't saying, like, you must work these shifts, it's, all of these shifts are open, and then these employees take them.
And a lot of these are overnight shifts, I mean, you, you, you can try to sleep overnight, but.
Yeah, well.
If you listen to how often.
Yeah, I think they're kind of busy.
You don't often sleep through the night overnight.
Okay, so, um, we're, other than checking on the location of the town meeting, we're set with that. Um, we are ready to go into executive session, I believe, to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations.
Was Jim here for something other than that, or is, okay, just making sure.
Um, the thing of it is, I would suspect that we have, um, once we go into executive session, we will take several minutes before we'll invite Jim in?
Yeah, yes, please.
As we have some information from our attorney that we should.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, we go into executive session, chapter thirty, section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy and prep for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief. Um, we will be in executive session, um, possibly have open session announcements when we, when we come out, otherwise to adjourn. Nope, I have a motion.
Uh, second.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna roll call?
Well, we have to say motion, second, for the discussion. It's, it looks like John might wanna ask a question before that.
Uh, just seeing that there might be some interest before reading, from the public before we're going.
Okay, quick, quick question.
I'm just wondering, when could we expect a sign of the common regarding town meeting? I know that the public works department has one in their facility, but it's not being used, and there's no.
There is, there is one of those signs down at Truffalo Square, I think that's the town's, so maybe it'll be announced down there. It's probably not gonna come up on the common, but it'll be down at Truffalo Square, right in front of.
Because the one down at the square is being used for safety purposes, is put, is put there by the chief, chief of police.
Well, we're gonna be tackling with him, so we'll see.
So we do, we do have a sign that is just sitting at the D P W that's not being used.
I don't know.
You, no, there is.
Okay, well, for, we'll.
So I would hope you can have one.
Thought we had one down that was damaged, but I don't understand.
Yeah, well, we'll look into it, I I think it was damaged too, and it's not operational, but we'll talk with the chief, um, in a couple minutes about maybe, um, doing, having that sign for announcing the town meeting on an appropriate time. Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session, we have a seconded, roll call.
Dixon, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Marshall, yes.